Good afternoon everyone. And actually, it is my great privilege to take a full class on this. And I have been told... Why, disturbing! All the students... Now, I have been told that I have to take some further intensive class, maximum six and minimum four, seven, on the unification of Nepal as it was. Then, the role of Prasunaran Sahar as a esthetician. So these are good topics which I am going to discuss with you in this further I will... And to begin with, I will discuss the unification of Nepal. And we start today and possibly in three or four lectures. I will give my complete, exact, the unification of Nepal. Now, when we... Now, first of all, I could not bring the PowerPoint because of the very short period of notice. And the person who is in charge of this program, he has made a photocopy of the files I have mentioned here and he will distribute them to you, that files and whatnot. That will be a kind of handoff to you. Now, when we talk about the unification of Nepal, it is the little conquest of the three states of Nepal Valley and also different principalities in the east and the west. And that is called the unification of Nepal. But there is still, there is a little controversy about the unification of Nepal. And that is, most of the writers consider the conquest of the valley kingdoms. That is Kantipur, Laliipur and Okthapur as the unification of Nepal. So when a student is asked, "When was Nepal unified?" And the answer will be, "Seventeen sixty-eight." It was seventeen sixty-eight, while the year when Kantipur and Laliipur were conquered by the Nepal Saha. And regarding the year seventeen sixty-nine, it was the year when Okthapur was conquered. So, most of the writers believe that the conquest of the valleys, the valleys states of Kantipur, Laliipur and Okthapur was the unification of Nepal. But it is not true. Actually speaking, when we talk about the unification of Nepal, it starts with the year seventeen forty-two, when Prasunaran Sahar made his first attempt to conquer Nawa, which was a part of Kantipur, which was not an independent state, but it was a part of Kantipur. And the unification of Nepal begins only in eighteen hundred sixteen, when Nepal lost a war with the East India Company and the treaty of Budoli was signed. So the seventy-five years, from seventeen forty-two to eighteen hundred sixteen, is the unification. So this thing, first of all, we must understand. When we talk about the unification of Nepal, it is not only the conquest of the valleys, it is not only the conquest of Kantipur, Laliipur and Okthapur. Rather, it is the conquest of the eastern and western principalities and also the war with the East India Company, which Nepal lost and which actually hindered the unification process, which was started by Prasunaran Sahar in seventeen forty-two. So this is actually the meaning of the unification. And the unification of Nepal is actually carried on for full seventy-five years. There is not seventeen forty-two to fifty-nine. Now, regarding the unification of Nepal, I have tried to drive the unification of Nepal into three phases. The first phase is what we call the foundation of the unification. Foundation. And it starts with seventeen forty-two and it begins in the year seventeen sixty-nine. So this is the foundation period. We call it the foundation of the unification of Nepal. Then the second period is the period of expansion. Expansion of the unification of Nepal. And the second period covers the period seventeen seventy and seventeen ninety. From seventeen seventy to seventeen ninety-two, we call it the second phase of the unification of Nepal, exchange. The unification of Nepal, which had been founded by Prasunaran Sahar, was expanded. There was the complete expansion of Nepal. And the third period, which we call the climax of the unification. First one is the foundation. Second one is the expansion and formality, climax. And it starts with eighteen hundred four and it begins in the year eighteen hundred sixteen. And there is a gap of about twelve years. That is from seventeen ninety-three to eighteen hundred three. This is a gap in the unification period because no unification was allowed in this period of time. Because of the political instability, because of the political turmoil and because of the instability in everything, the unification work was disturbed. It was discontinued. But so much of this work was taken, started and the unification of Nepal was completely altered, or to say overturned by the unification of Nepal. When Nepal signed the treaty with East India Company after defeat of Nawa. So there are three main stages of the unification of Nepal, which we are going to discuss in the next three quarters. Now first, today we discuss the foundation, or to say, the unification of Nepal, foundation. The starting point of the unification of Nepal. Now to begin with, before the unification of Nepal by King Prasunaran Sahar. Nepal was a very big group, more than fifty small principality. More than fifty small individual states. And in the far western region, that is Galtanari region, there were twenty-two states, which I think most of you know it well, which we call Baiji. So there were small twenty-two states in the Galtanari region, that is in Far western region. And the active number of these small principalities were different from time to time. Sometimes it may come down to fifty and sometimes it may go up to fifty-one, in different times. What given then, the group of states which existed in the Galtanari region, we call it the Baiji. In most of the times, there were twenty-two small states in the Galtanari region. Actually, we call it Baiji. Similarly, in the Galtanari region, there were twenty-four other states, similar principalities, and we call them Chhobi. And there also, you know, there may be some difference of the number of states in different times. Sometimes it may come down, it may sometimes it may go up. But given then, those states in the Galtanari region were famous as Chhobi. Chhobi is a group of twenty-four small states. Similarly, in the Kathmeri Valley. And the Kathmeri Valley at that time is famous as Nepal Valley. Not Kathmeri Valley, it is called Nepal Valley at that time. And in the Nepal Valley, there were three independent states as a result of Nawa. Kantipur, Okthapur and Laliipur. And all these three states were ruled by the Mughal Raj. So there were three independent states in Nepal. Kathmeri Valley, known as Nepal Valley. And in the east, or to say in the eastern Tharai and you know, this mountain, this region, there were again, three or four small states. And see around them were Makwanpur, Vidyaipur and so on. These were the three small states. And all of these states in the east were ruled by the Sienal kings. The kings of the small states in the east were ruled by the Sienal kings. So in total, you know, more than thirty small states existed in Nepal before they were unified by King Prasunaran Sahar and his successor from a period of seventy-five years, from seventeen forty-two. And the leadership of the unification of Nepal was taken by Borka. And Borka was one of the small states just in the west of the Kathmeri Valley. And it was one of the Chhobi states. But sometimes, Borka claimed that it was not a Chhobi state because they separate independent states. But anyway, there is a little controversy about that and we just want to discuss good controversy. If you are a history of history, then I will be glad to discuss this controversy, but it is not our job, that's why. We have to say that Borka was also one of the Chhobi states. And it was Borka who took the leadership in the unification. Now if you have read this series and opened it up, the history of the world, you will be actually familiar with the unifications of Italy and Germany. Unification of Italy and unification of Germany. And the unifications were carried out in eighteen hundred seventy. That is more latter than Nepal, you know. But those unifications of Italy and Germany are very famous as a part of the history of the world. And in Italy, Italy was, there were so many small states. And one of those states was Sardinia. And Sardinia took the leadership in the unification. Similarly, Germany was divided into thirty-nine states once. And it was Prascha, one of the states of Germany, which took the leadership in the unification. So in Nepal also, the role played by Sardinia in the unification of Nepal and the role played by Prascha in the unification of Germany, in the unification of Nepal, the same role was played by Borka. I think it is clear. It was under the leadership of a small state Borka that Nepal...
How many states were there in Italy before that?
No, it's just one, yes. So I cannot give you that, that, you know, every municipality was a state at that time. They are in the case of Germany, it was forty-nine, whereas in Italy, there were hundreds.
So this was in seventeen eighty, forty or?
Quite in seventy, it was united.
Fifty, seventy?
Seventy. One is seventy. So you know, more than hundred years after Nepal was united, the unification of Italy and Germany could play. But in India, you know, India is just a world. These unifications of Italy and Germany, I think it is more than just a unification in the world. And that's why, when we talk about the unification in the world history, we generally think in the world, it is China. And lastly, you know, recently in nineteen ninety, there was the unification of Germany. Again, there was a second unification of Germany. Because we know, after the Second World War, the United States and the Soviet Union, you have here, here are the areas in Germany and what you have in the east and west Germany, as you know, they were unified until nineteen hundred ninety. Because that was the second unification of Germany. And there were questions of the unification, you know, in Korea also. Sometimes there, there were the questions of unification and sometimes there were the questions of what is, what is the Oliver War, what is the war? That is the problem. And in Vietnam also. When you have North Vietnam, it's about Vietnam. And actually, it was North Vietnam which conquered without Vietnam and it was united. It has, I think, all of you know, anyway. So, the role played by Sardinia in Italy unification and the role played by Prascha in Germany unification was the kind of model of Nepal in which the role, the leading role was played by Borka in Italy. Now, there is a small controversy among the writers about the unification of Nepal. And the question is, whether it was the unification of Nepal or it was the expansion of Nepal. You might have all, some kind of controversy among the writers, didn't it? Some writers say that, well, it is not the unification of Nepal, it was simply the expansion of Borka. Whereas some others say, no, it was the unification of Nepal. Because you know, during the二战 period, Nepal was a mini-state. Nepal was a single state at the time of Hitler period. But rather, due to many, many party, due to the West's party, it was, it was into more than sixty states. And all these fifty states were brought into one unit by Prasunaran Sahar and his successor, and that's why it is unclear. So there is a kind of controversy, whether the word was the unification of Nepal or the expansion of Borka. And this question, we shall discuss at the end of our expansion. At the further forth we will discuss, not now. But now it is sufficient to say that when Prasunaran Sahar started with military campaign against the small kingdom of Nepal Valley, that is Kantipur, Laliipur and Okthapur. At that time, we were not working for the unification of Nepal. That is clear, you know this. We should be very, very honest and very, very impartial when we discuss this. We should not be guided by the grand fate of nature. We should not discard the truth. And that's why, when Prasunaran Sahar started the military campaign in seventeen forty-two, the main thing Prasunaran Sahar wanted was the conquest of the valley kingdoms of Kantipur. And it is clearly mentioned in the DVD of the days of Prasunaran Sahar. DVD, you know, when Prasunaran Sahar about to die, when he was very much keen, he went to Nawa for it. And delivered a lecture in front of the main courtiers of Nepal, main parlor of Nepal. And the thing which he spoke in this lecture was confined later on. This is known as DVD right now. And in that DVD, he said that he was married to the princess of Makwanpur. Makwanpur was one of the states ruled by the Sienal kings, because I want to do it. So Prasunaran Sahar was married to the princess of Makwanpur and there was a kind of, you know, small clash between Prasunaran Sahar and his brother-in-law, Dibon Drikonshen. Drikonshen was the king of Makwanpur. And each, Doctor Indu Humari, was married to Prasunaran Sahar and Indu Humari's brother was Dibon Drikonshen. So there was a small clash between the, in the case of the religious marriage of the states. Because the Sahar family was different to which Prasunaran Sahar belonged and the Sienal family was different. And the Sienal family considered themselves as superior to the Sahar. Isn't it? Because the Sienal kings said that they had inherited those states by their ethnicity and by their conquests. And gave to have also a strong tie with the rulers of India. So they considered themselves to be superior. Whereas Prasunaran Sahar also did not want to show his inferiority. Which is why it is there. And he also made several demands at the marriage rituals. So there was a clash between Prasunaran Sahar and Indu Humari. And at the end, Prasunaran Sahar had returned from Makwanpur to Borka without taking his bride. Without taking his new wife. So when he was returning from Makwanpur to Borka, from Jandakiri, he is, well, the statue of Prasunaran Sahar was simply destroyed with a fluke of wood. When he was passing through the Jandakiri hill, he saw the Kathmeri Valley. And he asked his courtier, which one is Okthapur, which one is Laliipur, which one is Kantipur, whom did his courtier, who did, when this is Kantipur, from the hill. Then a kind of killing of conquering these beautiful states emerged. And he started his military campaign, keeping in mind only the conquest of the valley kingdoms, only this. So the question of unification at that time was the highest. I want to say, I want to do it. And you know, why Prasunaran Sahar wanted to conquer these three states? The most important cause is that these three kingdoms of the Nepal Valley were very prosperous from economy to finance. The agriculture of this valley was, valley was productive. And it is said, you know, that if the people of valley made great labor for three months, then it will produce sufficient grades for agriculture. So that type of productivity was there in the agricultural development, Kathmeri. So it was very much, I mean, influenced by the prosperous economic state of the Kathmeri Valley. And the second thing was that the three kingdoms of the Kathmeri Valley were always in conflict with one another. That is the second thing. And the third thing is that Prasunaran Sahar had no option. You know, Prasunaran Sahar could not advance towards the west. Because in the west of Borka, there were many powerful states. For example, Casteen, London, Tonohu, no, Makwanpur in the east, nothing different. Parva, Tonohu, Varma, many states. So it was not possible for Borka to move towards the west. That's why he tried to move towards the east. And the three independent principalities he had in Kathmeri Valley was his. It is clear? Now, how the three principalities of the Kathmeri Valley were becoming weak and weak because of the internal clash between the two states? Is that, you know, at that time, the internal politics of the Kathmeri Valley states was at its worst twice. And you know, when we read the history of that period, it is rather very much surprising to us that those very three small states were struggling against one another. If today, if this year, Laliipur and Kantipur join hands against Okthapur, then the very next year, Okthapur and Laliipur would join hands against one another. So that was it. Political clash between these three small states. And apart from that, regarding Kantipur, the last monarch king of Kantipur was Jai Phat. The name of the last monarch was Jai Phat Mala. And it was the, what to say, it was the very much strict nature of Jai Phat Mala, strict nature of the king, that the courtiers were... That means the king of Kantipur, Jai Phat Mala, could not control these courtiers. And there was a kind of clash between the different sections of courtiers, some supporting the king and some opposing the king. So that was the position of Kantipur. Regarding the position of Laliipur. At Laliipur, the king was powerless. The ministers were all powerful. They were four grand, six grand, they were six ministers. And these six powerful ministers, they, you know, they go to the king at any time they like and they install any person as a king of Laliipur. And you will be surprised to know that Jai Phat Mala of Kantipur became the king of Laliipur twice. Similarly, King Rani Phat Mala of Okthapur also became the king of Laliipur for one time. So that was the position of Laliipur. Now regarding Okthapur, Okthapur was twice. It will be much like this. But during the time of Rani Phat Mala, Rani Phat Mala was the last monarch king of Kantipur. Now this kind of Rani Phat Mala, he only one legitimate son died. He had only one legitimate son. And according to the tradition, only the legitimate son can inherit this. Given that, that is clear, clear to me. So when the only legitimate son of Rani Phat Mala died, there is a illegitimate son, he had many illegitimate sons. And give illegitimate, illegitimate sons playing here, sharing each one. So there was political turmoil in the kingdom. So in this way, all the three small principalities of Nepal Valley were struggling against one another. And in all the three principalities of the Nepal Valley, the political association had defined law. Now, regarding the position of Borka. Now when, why Borka took the leadership in the unification of Nepal? Something is changing question and I already answered you that there was no alternative for Borka than to move towards the east. Because it was impossible for Borka to move towards the west because of the existence of many powerful states in Nepal. because of the existence of many powerful states in the west. And regarding the attempt of Gorka to move towards the east, it was not started by Prasunaran Sahar. It was started as, I mean, as only as Ram Sahar. It was Ram Sahar, you know, who came to get a commercial treaty with the king of Nepal. And who took the businessman of Lalipur to Gorka for trade and commerce. So it was Ram Sahar who tried to cultivate a kind of alliance with the king of Nepal. And it was because of this alliance, the son of Ram Sahar, who is named Dambrosa. I am going in detail because you know that in the time of intense, you may never answer any question regarding the unification of Nepal, so I am getting a little bit in detail. So, it was because of the commercial treaty between Ram Sahar and the Sino king of Lalipur that Ram Sahar successed Dambrosa, his son. He gave Lalipur in a war between Lalipur and Kantipur. So it was Dambrosa, Ram Sahar's son, who was involved in the politics of him, and his son. Here, struggle between Lalipur and Kantipur, Dambrosa gave, he gave Lalipur. Similarly, under the Prince of Prasunaran Sahar, now after Dambrosa, there were two other rulers, Prasunaran Sahar and Ruchasah, who were connected, you know, so it changed. But during the time of Prince Prasunaran Sahar, he, the boy in Gorka, he also wanted to strip his influence in the valley kingdoms. And he also had come to the valley kingdoms or to the kingdoms. So Prince Prasunaran Sahar was trying in best to move towards the east. Similarly,